Member Smythe, Councilmember Stevens, they had one another obligation and one a health excuse. And so, reason, sorry, excuse sounded bad. Please join us in a moment of silence, after that Councilmember Howe will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. A moment of silence. Nope. You entertain a motion that we begin?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now please join us in a moment of silence, after that Councilmember Howe will lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the repeating end of its fall.
Thank you, we're excited tonight to introduce some of our new employees, in this case it's some new firefighters. Would invite Chief West and Chief Story to come up and introduce Travis Tyler and Levi.
Well Levi is on his way here, he's working at his full-time gig and just delivered a patient to the hospital. So I guess we're gonna have Tyler and Travis. They both have worked full-time elsewhere and they're solid pickups for us, so we're looking forward to having them on staff here.
Good, excellent, welcome to South Ogden, appreciate you being here.
Always ask me to be in the picture so they look, so they look more fit and younger.
I was just wondering when you're gonna grow one of those firefighter mustaches.
Maybe someday.
When you retire.
When I'm working for you.
There you go.
Thank you, appreciate that. Next, a great, great event, we just renewed, started up our U City Council recently. I think today was our third meeting and we have a great group of teens that are gonna serve well in the U City Council. So we'd like to give them the oath of office, we'll invite them to come up at this time. Our city recorder Lisa will do it just like she does it to the mayor and council members. No, they practice.
Not online.
They practice. Remember your spots?
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Please say your name.
Eva McKenna.
Sarah Kettner.
Natalie Cherry.
Anthony Buck.
Gabriel Carrier.
Joshua Geiger.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will, that I will support?
That I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah?
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge my duties?
And that I will discharge my duties.
As a member of the South Ogden City Youth Council?
As a member of the South Ogden City Youth Council.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Pictures are different, so there's a pen, he's cool. Now for the camera. If you can, sir, your official South Ogden pin.
Save those pins for exam.
Yes.
I guess while the mayor's shaking hands and taking pictures, I just mentioned that we're super excited to have the Youth City Council back in South Ogden. It's been a number of years ago and just couldn't be more impressed with the youth that have stepped up this year and are gonna help us get this going again. An exciting opportunity coming up on the 22nd of January. It'll be Youth City Council Day at the Legislature with the Utah League of Cities and Towns. So we'll be able to take the youth down and they'll spend the morning at the state Capitol and then they'll have the opportunity to hear the governor speak at lunch and then they'll have lunch with their state legislators, so hoping to make this a valuable opportunity for the, for the youth. Thank you, yeah, that's great. And parents, thank you, I know they don't make it here on their own off times and thank you for your, your support in this as well. Amazing how, just how good they look after just a couple meetings, so. Good leaders, good youth. Next is public comment, but anybody to come and address the mayor, council and staff, tell us what's on your mind. We're online, Daniel, we're good? Those online will give you till 6:20 to make any comments online. Just put the words "public comment" and then your comment as if you were here in chambers. Okay, seeing none, let's go on to our consent agenda, there's one item, approval of the December 17th, 2024 council minutes. Any corrections, changes to those minutes? Councilmember Stewart?
Just one item, on line 534, it just needs to be changed to the fire chief from assistant city manager. Thank you.
Everybody's getting promotions and changes. Okay, thank you. Enter here motion to approve the consent agenda with that change to line 534.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, our first discussion action item is consideration of Resolution 25-01, proven agreement with time clock plus for fire department employee time tracking. Chief West?
So basically we're just changing vendors to more, well, in the event the city decides to go to a time card system, this will be more streamlined and this new company has a little more functionality for us. Plus it'll be better for us to use, so we already use it, like I said, we're just changing platforms, so.
Yeah, you, you pleased with the change?
Yeah.
Good thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions for chief? Okay, seeing now entertain a motion that we approve Resolution 25-01.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, this is a roll call, Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yep.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks chief. Discussion item tonight is water wise landscaping requirements. Mr. Dixon, Lisa?
Ally.
Ally, even better. Not used to.
See John's, Peter's comments about.
That's right.
First off, sorry, a little sick tonight. Um, but yeah, this item was inspired by comments that came from one of the final council meetings from last year when we were discussing the landscape ordinance, specifically language. When we were discussing language about what is and isn't allowed in the park strip. Um, there were a couple of comments about other sections of this ordinance and so staff just wanted to give council just the opportunity to voice any concerns with the ordinance as, as is and that way gives staff some direction to move forward, make those corrections.
Remember what you previously said. Councilmember Stewart? Thank you.
I just know that we had made some changes so that we could qualify for the rebates from the Weber Basin water. And I don't remember exactly what the concern was, but I know that last year at the conference for Utah League of Cities and Towns that we went to, I went to a class and they were talking, maybe it was the year before, sorry. Anyway, time blends together. Anyway, and they were talking about how your landscaping can make a positive difference. If you have an ugly building but you have beautiful landscaping, it can help. However, if you just have pea gravel out in front of the building, it does nothing to improve the beauty of the building, in my opinion. And I'm a rock person, I like rocks, I like a lot of rocks, I like looking at them, I like collecting them, but there's a limit to the beauty of solid rocks everywhere you go. As far as the benefit to the city. So I just wanted us to look and see how many people actually used it and do we need to make some changes that way? Maybe we look at less coverage of, you know, like that there has to be some live something, not just. Because we've seen people take out and put in just rock and even if it's two colors of rocks, it's still just rocks.
Okay, so you're more looking at the wording, because I know right now it says can't be more than 35% of the yard and turf, but maybe rewarding it so that.
I'd like it to say something that they need to have at least some that's plants too, right? Like, okay, so maybe you can't have more than 35%, but you need to have at least 10%. Doesn't have to be turf, could be decorative grasses, it could be trees, it could be shrubs, it could be just. Because if we're replacing everything that's been plants in the past with rocks, that's gonna cause a problem with heat, right?
Sure.
Because rock is different with heat than plants are. So I just think we look at it and try and find a happy medium.
Absolutely. Um, I did reach out to, we were basing about participants within our city in the last few years. Um, let's see, we had 50 in 2022, 16 in 2023 for a flip year strip. And then the new program is the full yard. Um, we had, that was the year that they were transitioning, so they only had one or two in 2023 for the whole yard, but like I said, 16 for just a flip strip. And then since then, we've had 11 participants. Um, that can also be a result of us not promoting it as much. And maybe that's something that we need to do so they're aware that this is an option for them. Um, also to be aware that we do have a water use and preservation section of our general plan and so it's also putting that into motion. Um, part of that is water wise landscaping and putting together a committee for water wise conservation. So those are steps that we can also take for that and maybe just more education for the public. And if there's just a gap between what they can do with Weber Basin, maybe we can fill that and just come up with some solution there, we can help them out.
Yeah, because I know, I know we changed ordinance so people could qualify for that. But I think there were some restrictions in that that we almost even thought were too much. So we were torn between giving our residents access to get some money back to flip their strip versus we didn't love some of the requirements that they had on there, so.
Right.
So I think the, the numbers are way less and we seem to be out of the drought somewhat. So I would think we put in what we want to put in and not necessarily have to coincide with what Weber Basin has in theirs.
Sure, and I can reach out to them too and say, hey, if we have some of this wording but maybe have some, with this wording of having at least 10% of it be turf, like would that cancel out what you're wanting to do? While still showing that we're trying to do what we can to preserve water.
Yeah, I like that.
I guess I just would say, I don't think it has to be turf, I just think should have plants.
So mayor, could I just get some clarification from the council? Is this something you want to have scheduled on a work session to get into more of the details?
You were gonna say the weeds, it's okay. I'm not that shocked tonight.
I, I guess just to be clear on direction to staff on what you'd like to do. You want to schedule this on a work session, ultimately this would go to the planning commission. If, if you want them to revisit with some direction, you could just send it down to the planning commission with some direction to staff to help go through the process? Or if you want to spend just some more time on it first to review it and get a sense of, well, what, how do we feel and what is the direction, if any, to the planning commission? So I just don't want staff not clear on what you want and then you guys to be upset that, wait a minute, I thought we were gonna do this or do that, so any clarification would be helpful.
Suggestions, how to proceed, recommendations? We add it to a work session where we, with, and then we'd like your, for sure, your input and expertise on what we would change and how we would word that and then.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just hope it's left to us to get the wording, it could take a long time. Give us a starting point where we can tweak instead of invent, we're much better off.
Absolutely. Um, I also reached out, so prior here with Wes Haven, I was part of their water wise group. So we went on a retreat in Logan and maybe that's something we would like to do too. Um, I can reach out and get more information on that, but I can bring to you what I have now and we can go from there.
Yeah, that'd be great. Everybody good with that? Okay, excellent, thank you so much. Uh, there was no online public comment, so we'll move on to item nine, reports direction to city manager. Councilmember Howe?
Um, yeah, I just kinda wanna reiterate what I said last meeting and, and express my appreciation for our South Ogden City Youth Council members that are here. It's, it's really cool and I, I mentioned this in our, in our meeting earlier that when we get an opportunity to go down to the legislate, the legislature at the end of the month, uh, going to the Capitol building as, as, as somebody that's involved in the legislative process is certainly different than reading about it on KSL or, or maybe even seeing it on the news every once in a while. But not only to our youth, but to those that are listening and those that are in attendance this evening, keep in mind that our legislators work for us and work for you as a resident of the great state of Utah. And I encourage you to pay attention to some of those, uh, bills and, and resolutions that are brought before you. Don't be shy to reach out to your legislators, we had an opportunity last meeting to have them come and visit us. And there's things that, uh, that affect us in our daily lives that affect you in your own backyard and your sidewalks and your streets and your schools that sometimes get past, uh, without much resistance or, or much feedback. There's, there's one particular bill that I was brought aware of this week that I'm not particularly happy with and I'm gonna talk to my representatives about it. So please be a participant and pay attention to what's going on around you, not only here in these city council meetings, but in your legislator. We, we have a part-time legislator in the state of Utah and they only meet for about six weeks every, every winter and now's the time to, to reach out to them, so I'll get off my soapbox, but please participate.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks, I just wanna say happy new year, it's a great, great year, gonna be a good one.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Howard?
And I will echo those same thoughts that, um, and I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but just thank you for being involved and tell your, tell your friends of how cool it is and, and what you're doing and what you're experiencing and, and being able to go down to the Capitol. Tell them and get them excited as well, so pass, pass it along, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I guess I'll just add on to how excited we are about the Youth City Council, I've already mentioned that a little bit and just invite the members of the Youth Council, this, this is your program. You have the opportunity to tell us, we, those of us from the city that are here. You have the opportunity to tell us, we, those of us from the city that are here are resources to support you. So as you have ideas on things you want to learn, things you want to understand more about government or, you know, policy creation, public policy or something specific to South Ogden City or Weber County, I just invite you to, to share those things and help us, help you to have the experience that, that you want to have. But super impressed with this group, just the few meetings we've had, very sharp and, and committed youth. So excited for the things we'll be able to accomplish. City council members, we are planning to go down with the Youth Council on the 22nd of January. If you haven't already told me that you want to attend, please let me know. I'm gonna register the Youth City Council members and any of us who are able to go tomorrow. It was what I would hope to do. Mayor, I'll put you down. And I know Jeremy indicated you're going, council member, former council member Brent Straight, our community representative, is going. That group that's going with the county, Youth Council is planning to go early so that we can go to the state Capitol with the youth at 8:00 a.m. for the Utah League of Have Breakfast and then there's some things happening there. You're welcome to join us for that or you could also just sign up and come down and meet us at the Salt Palace for the lunch activity, which will be the speaker. Governor Cox, I think typically speaks and then lunch with our legislators. So don't feel obligated to go to the whole day. You can just let me know if you just want to come to the, to the lunch or just come to the morning session, whichever you'd like. So let me know after this meeting or in the morning. Coming up on January 31st, we're still planning our city council annual strategic planning retreat. You've all been a part of it at least once, some of you many more times than just once. So if you have ideas or things that, that you'd like to see us do to improve that process or improve the time we spend together, let Mayor Porter or, or myself know. Now's a good time to start just thinking about how, how that's going to go. I have, at least from staff, some recommendations that we not do it. Out in the, the hallway again, I thought it was just hard to hear and it, it was a little, a little, it didn't work out as good as we had hoped. I guess I'll say that, so. Please share any ideas you might have. Put on your calendars April 16th through the 18th. That's the Utah League of Cities and Towns mid-year conference in St. George. I think registrations, if they're not open already, they will be shortly. And so again, let me know if you need staff to be sure to get you registered to attend that. Mayor, that's all I have. Happy New Year and looking forward to great things in 2025.
Thank you. On that retreat, remember your significant others are invited to the dinner on that Friday night, the 31st. So get that on their calendars now so they can join us. I am working to get the Youth City Council school excused for that January 22nd. If not, the parents, you'll, you can excuse them, but I believe I might have a way to get them excused through the school. Just as a matter of information, so on the first Wednesday, first Wednesday, first Monday of every month is WACOG, Weber Council of Government Meeting. And it's the 15 mayors, Weber County, the three county commissioners and a council member from Ogden. And that's gone on every Monday and I'm fortunate enough to chair that, that committee and that meeting. And we'll do that again one more year. I don't know if you listened to that part, but, but before that, there is a housing subcommittee that meets each month. Kind of starts as Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And I just gonna give, appreciate Mr. Dixon. He, he attends that for us. He represents us at that. I, it's hard for me to go to that because they usually run in late to the next meeting and where I have to chair that. I'd like, I'd like to be there, be the first one there. But just appreciate his attendance last week, yesterday. And I'm, I always hear from the other mayors and those that run that, how helpful that is to have Mr. Dixon there. So I appreciate your attendance at that and I think that's going quite well. Other than that, amen to what else has been said. And this is probably the shortest meeting in the last seven years. So you guys are good luck. Appreciate you being here. Entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.